Call the meeting of the Waco City Council on October 1st, 2024 to order at 3:01 PM. Welcome everyone to the Waco City Council Work Session. Welcome to those in the gallery here at the Boski Theater at 100 Washington in downtown Waco and welcome to the viewers at home watching on the Waco City Cable Channel. We will now start the meeting with a moment of silence. We will start this meeting today recognizing work session speakers and we do have a couple of cards this afternoon and if anyone else is present who would like to speak on a work session agenda item, go ahead and let me know, but we're going to start with the cards that have been turned in and our first card is from Mr. Luis Garcia. Please come forward. Before I do that, let me read the, Mr. Garcia, let me read the, read the warnings here first. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearing, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation regardless of the number of agenda items a speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary staff at the registration table outside behind us there to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation and staff will distribute those to the council. If you are unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. When called to the podium, please state your name and address. For the record, each speaker must limit comments to three minutes. If you are speaking on behalf of a group of 10 or more individuals present, please have those persons stand at the beginning of your comments and you'll be given 10 minutes to address the council. Please note that if you stand in support of a person getting 10 minutes to speak, you are forfeiting your right to speak on that item. For any person addressing the council through the use of a translator, the speaking time will be doubled to accommodate the translation services. While public discourse is very important to this council, we have to maintain order in the meetings so that all persons may be heard and city business may be conducted. If so directed by me, the sergeant-at-arms will remove from the council meeting any person who while addressing the city council or while attending the city council meeting makes personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, becomes boisterous, or makes unauthorized remarks from the audience, or claps their hands, or stomps their feet, whistles, yells, or makes similar demonstrations. So I'm calling on, there's a couple of cards we have here. Again, Mr. Garcia, I'm ready for you now. So come on up, state your name and address for the record. Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Louis Garcia, 261 Central Line Road, Waco. I'm speaking today on behalf of the mural proposal for the South Waco Community Center. As chairman of the Waco Hispanic Museum located at 2815 Spate, we're in favor of this. We think it'll be a great addition to the community to recognize the Hispanics that have acknowledged, that have helped Waco and grow Waco through the years and it's a great opportunity that they're being acknowledged now. And we pray that we will continue to do that with the exhibit of the South Waco Community Center and the Heritage Trail and the parks. Waco's history on Hispanics has been written and people are acknowledging and realizing that the Hispanics have been in Waco for a long time and they're now being acknowledged. And so I'm in great favor of that and I appreciate your time and consideration on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Garcia. Our next card is from Mr. Pete Arvizo. Mr. Arvizo. When called to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, Pete.
My name is Pastor Pete Arvizo, 113 Painted Horse Trail of Waco, Texas. And I am here too also to advocate for the mural there in South Waco Community. But first of all, I would like to thank you all for, for the opportunity that you have considered approving or looking at this mural for the South Waco Community Center. I also would like to thank Fiona Bond and Creative Waco, Amanda Dyer, and also Mellette Harris for their guidance and hard work in making this presentation possible. And I'd also like to thank my brother Armando for presenting the idea of putting together a mural there for the South Waco Community. And I also thank him for his, for his dedication and he deserves the credit for this. He brought the idea to the Cesar Chavez Association and as president, I want to thank him for that. Also, I want to express, you know, how a beautiful mural can be for a community. It expresses so many stories. It expresses stories of our, of our Christianity and also arts and history and, and love and unity. And so my hope for this mural and prayer that this mural, this painting will provide a significant evidence of the Hispanic heritage, heritage life, you know, from the past to the, to the present. I also pray that this mural will leave a trace of our presence all over Waco. That we're here, we belong here in Waco, Texas, here in, in South Waco Community. It's our community. And I hope that this great mural will also depict a story of the Hispanic daily life and that this mural will present a beautiful scenery of, of unity and, and love. And that's why I'm here today. And you know, this mural and the debate process has proven to be a challenge with disagreements and different opinions. And I know that we're not going to make everyone happy as to what's going to be on the, on the mural, but I hope and pray that, that this will give us all a glimpse, a glimpse of how the Hispanic culture has diversified over the years. We have changed and we have grown together, worked together and, and also prospered in education and then in church. And I also pray that by the time this mural is finished, that, that it will serve as an instrument, as an instrument for liberation, if I could say that, and, and freedom of speech, you know, expressing our Christian values and our family values and that it will also advance a public opinion that will encourage unifying us and bringing us together.
Thank you, Pastor Arvizo.
I thank you very much for the opportunity.
Appreciate you, Pastor. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak on a work session agenda item? Let me see. There being none, we'll now recess the regular session and convene into work session with a report from the city manager. City Manager Ford?
Good afternoon to everybody in the audience and online. We do not have any changes to the agenda today. I did want to talk through the two informal reports that are on the agenda. IR 772 is an update on Pet Circle Regional Animal Center. Council received an in-depth presentation on this facility in early September. We were shifting operations as well as our future plans, which involved the, the anticipated exit of the Humane Society from the operations. Today's IR, you'll note, includes an update on how things have changed since we've become the sole operator and also addresses the public concerns that have been voiced over the last few weeks. The shelter remains full, so everybody that came today gets a dog, it's in the, it's in the foyer. No, the shelter remains full, but our staff is, is really doing a, a great job caring for the animals on campus and facilitating positive outcomes. The live exit rate for September was 97%, which more than beats our goal of 90% and represents a, a one-point increase from August's number of 96%. We've added 15 staffers on, on the site. Those are starting to come online and provide some relief for, for city staff that we brought over to serve at that location. Also of note, the first group of volunteers will be on campus for orientation this weekend, about 50 of them, going through two orientation classes. We'll continue working with the remaining folks that are on the volunteer list and we know each one of those individuals is excited and contribute to solutions at the shelter. So that's IR 772.
I'll just jump in on this one. City Manager Ford, a nice report, very cogent, concise, great metrics and KPIs in there. I like to look at the numbers and so it was very helpful for me to kind of see where we are as far as live exit rates, animal intake, and those trends are both good. A, a nice goal of transparency, I see for the, for the, the little report there. Also always encouraged to see that the volunteers here, a high number of volunteers that are willing to get into the, get into, to help on this responsible pet ownership and, and animal control issue. So just a great report and looking forward to working with those volunteers to, to make the animal control and the pet ownership situation in Waco the best it can be.
IR 773 provides an update on the Doris Miller Indoor Pool Project Timeline. The contract, you might remember, was awarded at the city council meeting on August 20th and we anticipated construction starting in September and completing before Christmas of this year. There have been some delays during contract execution, which pushed back our start date and the contractor is on site and work has begun this week, but the delay means that our anticipated completion before the end of the year is looking about four weeks delayed from that point. So we'll be finished in late January instead of late December. Staff is coordinating with the contractor, Elite Construction, to identify ways to expedite the project to try and get closer to our timeline of December, but wanted to make sure that the council was aware we're going to miss our target there because I know there's been, the public and Councilmember Bearfield in particular have been interested in that project completing as soon as possible. So that's the update on 773. I'll take any questions on the IRs at this point.
Thank you, Bradley. I, it crystal clear that I'm, you know, this is not the news I wanted, but nevertheless, I appreciate staff for doing everything that they can to decrease the days on the calendar in any way possible. Was this, it was just construction error, I mean, as far as timeline?
So it boils down to in the contract, it states the definition of work days versus actual days.
Correct.
And I wouldn't put it on the, on the contractor at all. I'd put it on myself, the city staff, that we should have been, we should have gotten it done right after council and should have been able to recognize that work days means days that the contractor can work and met the expectations that we delivered to y'all in prior meetings, which is that we would be done by the end of the year. So I don't put it on our, I wouldn't put it on Elite Construction at all.
Thank you. I mean, you know, all us flawed humans, but you know, we own it and we work past it. So instead of a pool for Christmas, we're getting a pool for New Year's.
Okay.
Or MLK Day.
Or MLK Day, yeah.
Is that better?
Fair enough. I appreciate your grace in that and certainly be looking at procurement process and processes on project management to reduce the number of incidences like this. We won't ever get to zero, but we need to get better.
Thank you.
It'll be our first ribbon cutting of 2025, if we can get it that way.
That's a really good PR spin on that.
Better be in January though, right? Not, not February.
Twenty-fourth and that. We do have one public hearing on the agenda today. It's Public Hearing 781, which is the schedule of drainage charges. That'll be presented by Public Works during the business session. We have 41 resolutions on the agenda and I'd like to highlight just one of them tonight. It's Resolution 786, which awards a qualified management agreement for, for private management of the Waco Convention Center to ASM Global for an initial 10-year term with two five-year renewal options. Their council has received a briefing on this recently and as you're likely aware, there'll be a transition period between October and November allowing for ASM, ASM's team to start operating the convention center beginning December 1st of this year. Under this agreement, council would approve the annual fixed management fee of $120,000 in the first year, as well as additional compensation to ASM based on food and beverage fees, sale of new commercial partnerships, sponsorships, naming rights, and incentive fees based on key performance measures. Under this agreement, ASM agrees to hire up to 12 city employees. However, thus far, as we reported at a prior meeting, 11 of the 12 employees impacted by this transition have already elected to transfer into other city departments. That's a, a fact that I'm really proud of. That's a, a very intentional effort by our human resources team to transition in a, in a way that respects the employees first. So 11 of the 12 will stay with the city. I, I do want to say thanks to the city staff that have participated in this project. It's been a long road to get to this point and the team that has operated this facility has done so for years with a high degree of professionalism and I look forward to their impacts in other departments now as well. Many departments helped us, but certainly HR deserves a lot of credit. City Attorney's Office, Finance, Purchasing, Economic Development, Communications, IT and Facilities, and, and Assistant City Manager Blackman in my office definitely all deserve some kudos for shepherding this difficult process and I look forward to seeing and reporting out on results of ASM Global in the future to make sure we're striking the right balance here in this building, operating it efficiently and effectively for the benefit of the community.
I'll just chime in on that one, Bradley. Also, we had a great presentation, I think, in the last meeting from Assistant City Manager Blackman. Appreciate your outline in the last meeting. I think this private management model will work. ASM has a great reputation in the industry. I think that'll be a great relationship here. Provide us some flexibility, maybe get some vision and do best practices, some efficiencies. And really I like the incentive plan that you're building around that, around really four points, food and beverage sales, sponsorships, gross revenue, and then KPIs, which I think is a nice way to get incentives kind of rolling. Also ACM Blackman did a great job on transition, the transition of our people and, and the placement and the runway and the sensitivity and the support. I think, well done, all the way around. Looking forward to this relationship.
We do have three ordinances on the agenda today, council. There's only one on first reading. It's Ordinance 823. It's an ordinance to approve an amendment to increase personnel numbers within Waco Fire Department in anticipation of the opening of Station 15 on Ritchie Road. The other two ordinances are on second reading and that'll conclude my report for today and I'll take any comments or questions.
I'll just, the other resolution that we're going to be, that's on the agenda today is 814, number 33, about the quiet zone. Just, I mean, it comes up, we've been talking about it for three or four years, maybe longer. Andrea, how long? And originally where we thought, and then I don't think it's anybody's fault that it's moving this fast. We, our counterpart is Union Pacific, who is known not to move super fast on, on responses, but it has sort of gone from what we thought was maybe three or four million to quite a bit higher than that. We're not spending that today. We're just doing engineering study, which I think is appropriate and I'm in favor of this, but just to get it everybody's, get it on everybody's radar, this quiet zone is probably a little more expensive than we originally anticipated as we, as we address it in the next couple of budget cycles. But thanks for the present, good information in the package there too, Paul. That's all I had. So that is all you have on, that's all you have to, Bradley?
I'm ready to introduce. I'm excited for our first work session.
All right. So all right, then I, then I've got to talk about the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes Resolutions 2024-782 through Resolution 2024-822. Are there any items the council would like to remove from the consent agenda today? We are pulling a few of them with some, some conflict issues. So the consent agenda includes Resolutions 2024-782 through Resolution 2024-822 except for Resolution 2024-782, 791, 793, 811, and 812. Councilmembers Borderood and Chase have filed affidavits of substantial interest. George, we've got you in on the substantial interest thing now. We've got you in on.
He's joined the fray.
We just get Borderood every time, okay.
Standard for us to just hide under the desk when those are voted on.
Okay, that's all right. We'll, we'll make sure.
Two meetings though, you know, full agenda.
Well, the agenda is work session items 2024-774 through 2024-776. Bradley, would you please introduce the first work session?
It's a, it's an honor to produce, or to introduce this one. It's a discussion of a potential mural donation from the Cesar Chavez Neighborhood Association to be located at South Waco Community Center. I'd like to welcome Fiona Bond from Creative Waco to make a presentation on this project. This mural comes to the city as a proposal for donation from the Cesar Chavez Neighborhood Association to celebrate Hispanic culture and local contributions and achievements within the Waco community. And I think the two speakers earlier said it very well. It's, it is a remarkable way to acknowledge the heritage and the building up of Waco that happened with our Hispanic residents here. And so I look forward to Fiona's presentation and also on break at some point, if folks would like to come down and see early design, it's right below me. Fiona?
Thank you so much. Thank you, City Manager Ford. Thank you, Mayor Holmes and Councilmembers Bearfield, Rodriguez, Ewing, Borderood, and Chase. Although I have the privilege of presenting this mural proposal to you today, I want to begin by acknowledging that the Cesar Chavez Neighborhood Association leaders and members have worked really hard on this project. They are the ones who get all the credit and it's on their behalf that I'm presenting today. I'd like to recognize their representatives in the room behind me and note that truly they have done a wonderful job of bringing the project to this point. I also want to acknowledge that what they've achieved is to be commended. Any mural project that tells either a historic or a cultural story is a logistic challenge and cannot possibly include everything. So just as Mr. Garcia was saying, this proposal is not intended to be the last word on telling a really important story for our community, but we hope that it might be the first. I have to remember how to, there we go. So to give you a little bit of background and context for this project, in 2023, Mr. Armando Arvizo from the Cesar Chavez Neighborhood Association approached Creative Waco with an idea for a mural that would honor the Hispanic story of South Waco's neighborhood. That idea was discussed with the Neighborhood Association and then it was decided to request that the mural be placed on a building that would symbolize both unity and community pride, that being the South Waco Community Center. And of course, it's also the home for the museum. The Cesar Chavez Neighborhood Association has been working with Creative Waco, City of Waco Parks and Recreation, and City of Waco Beautification, Arts and Culture to develop the project further. And the reason that we're here today is to seek approval from city council on three aspects of the project. So firstly, to place the proposed mural onto the city-owned South Waco Community Center building. Secondly, to approve expenses of up to $10,000 for Parks and Recreation to prepare the site. And thirdly, to adopt the completed mural into the City of Waco Public Art Collection. So the Cesar Chavez Neighborhood Association began this project by identifying a number of design objectives for this. The overarching goal is to honor the Hispanic cultural identity and history of the South Waco community. And in order to achieve this, the group sought to identify an artist that was able to create a mural in an authentic, recognizable Latinx style and to work, someone who could work with heartfelt community and stakeholder input, to engage the community and stakeholders in the design process, to create opportunities for community members to engage in a community paint day, which we hope will be coming up as the, as the mural gets painted, and to create a mural that will be a point of pride and an opportunity to engage future generations in the stories of their community. I want to take a moment to acknowledge that it takes a village and there have been so many people that have been involved in developing the project to this point. We are so grateful for the City of Waco staff who've been involved in conversations and discussions on this from Parks and Rec, Neighborhood Engagement, Beautification, Arts and Culture. There are over 38 people and businesses across the community, including many in the room today, who have funded this project in one way or another or supported it, both in kind and in money. Community stakeholders, dozens of residents, were invited to contribute either in person or via a survey, including youth association representatives and local businesses. The artist, Jesus Rivera, who has spent countless hours in discussion with the community about exactly how that history could be told and what people wanted to see on the mural. And then of course, the Neighborhood Association team and the mural committee, who have worked really tirelessly on this project. It's really been a big effort and we appreciate everybody who's been part of that. The proposed location for this is, as we mentioned, at the South Waco Community Center. You can see highlighted in yellow the exact location that is proposed. This location was chosen because the community, its center itself, is a symbol of unity and neighborhood identity and pride and of course, because the Waco Hispanic Museum is right there in that building also. A present, it's a corrugated facade which is facing Spate Avenue and the proposed area is 15 feet high by 48 feet wide. So a good size. Then the proposed work plan and timeline for this begins with the presentation of the project today and then for the next council meeting, there is a memorandum of understanding that will come forward for consideration that would then be the city's opportunity to review that agreement with the artist and the Neighborhood Association. That would then be the last touch point for city council until hopefully we cut a ribbon on completion of the mural. But in the meantime, during October, the site would be prepared. Parks and Rec would be preparing the site and installing panels that would make the wall suitable for painting a mural. October and November is the time spot slated for the actual implementation and painting of the mural itself, together with a community paint day. November would be the development of information and education that would go online in both English and Spanish to accompany the mural and hopefully completion in December, followed by celebration. A little bit about the artist who was selected for this project. His name is Jesus Rivera. He was unable to join us today, but he will be known to many in this community. He is originally from Monclova in Mexico, began painting at a very early age, studied arts at the University of San Luis Potos, and conducted advanced art studies in the United States and Europe. He's lived and worked in Waco for over 20 years and is a really significant member of the art community of Waco.
And not to cut you off, but he actually is here today. In the back of the theater.
Sorry. It was so glad to hear.
I had to go to just look at my glass or somebody thought that.
I'm thrilled that Jesus was able to join us today. He is currently exhibiting artwork and, and conducting commissions all over the world. He was telling me yesterday that he actually had to delay his upcoming exhibit at the National Palace in Florence, Italy in order to do this project. It is so, he is so passionate about this and this is so close to his heart. But what is not on that slide is that in 2017, he was recognized for outstanding service to the arts at a ceremony in the House of Cantinflas in Mexico City. Councilmember Rodriguez, her late husband Joe, and I all had the honor of accompanying him at that event and receiving an award recognizing Waco as a champion for Hispanic art. So Jesus has been a proponent of art and specifically Hispanic art in our community for a long time. The design proposal, which you see there, this is very much a draft design at this point and I want to make sure that we understand that the full color and the exact layout of portraits, that kind of thing, is not finalized, so it will be worked up from this. But you can see right here that Jesus has developed a, a canvas here which shows the approach that he would take for this mural and, and the basic design and layout. So it's a triptych, which means that three paintings are grouped together. It's a single painting on a contiguous panel, but each one- It's a single painting on a contiguous panel, but each window gives us a glimpse into different aspects of the community story that's being told. The artist will use durable UV-stable exterior paints, using traditional brush rather than spray techniques. The technique and the materials are like those that were used on the murals for Hotel Herringbone. So if you've seen those two murals, specifically the one with the two young women, it's the same materials and technique that is being proposed for this one. The artistic goals for this one, you will see there are three panels. The center depicts the Hispanic story of Waco and specifically the neighborhood. Of course, you can see that it also includes the indigenous history and that braided strand is the river and the rivers that are part of that story running through. The left shows the cultural story of the community with all kinds of aspects of Caedos and the, the fact that this has been absolutely at the root of Waco's history since the beginning. And on the right are a series of servant leader role models, people who represent both excellence in their life pursuits and also selfless support of others. And the idea is that that will be, they, together, they will be a method of storytelling for the current generation to the next generation about points of pride for the community, for the neighborhood, and hopefully will be stories that can be told from generation to generation. A community paint day is proposed for November when the whole neighborhood is invited to come out and put their touch on the artwork. Educational information about the mural will be carried on the Creative Waco website and the interactive art map, and there will be an informal plaque and QR code at the site so that people can dive into the further information about the mural in both English and Spanish. This design was developed through consultation between the artist and the Cesar Chavez Neighborhood Association with design input that was invited from the mural committee, the Neighborhood Association more broadly, sponsors, and other stakeholders in the community. I know lots of people have had input in terms of, you know, what could be depicted on the So the budget for this is $22,000 for the painting of the mural and then an anticipated $10,000 or up to $10,000 for preparation of the site. So design and community consultation was $5,000. The actual painting, including artist insurance and equipment rental, of $17,000. Site preparation and equipment would include the wall panels, the lighting, landscaping and equipment totaling 10. The Neighborhood Association has had donations of 22,000 to cover the expenses of painting the mural. And so part of the request to the City of Waco is for a commitment of up to $10,000 for Parks and Recreation to prepare the site, including vegetation trimming and removal, installing the three 14-foot by 15 and a half-foot panels of six millimeters, what I call aluminium and you call alumina, composite material, and to install lighting to illuminate the mural. We are asking, of course, for approval to place the proposed mural on the city-owned building. And of course, the Cesar Chavez Neighborhood Association would cover the costs for the actual mural through that sponsorship and donations. And then we're also asking, oh, apparently we have 121, 123. It should be approval to adopt the artwork into the City of Waco Public Art Connection. A donation agreement between the city, the Neighborhood Association, and the artist would be, will be presented at the next meeting. And that will follow the format that other donations of artwork to the city have taken. So thank you so much for listening and I welcome your questions.
Any questions or comments?
Fiona, I don't have a question. I just have a comment. I am so glad Jesus Rivera is our artist. We couldn't have found a better artist in the whole entire world, in my opinion, to paint our mural and our history for South Waco Community Center. I do have this one comment. I love La Pila in the first panel. That's, that's, you know, that, La Pila was the gathering place for a lot of us back in the day when St. Francis and La Jamaica's and the Caedos dances and plataforma, we all used to gather around La Pila. My aunt lived right across the street from La Pila, so I got to be there a lot. But the way you centered it and put it here in this first panel, Jesus, is absolutely great. I love it. I know later on you'll come and tell us what all you're gonna do on there for, you know, as your final project. And I know whatever you do will be beautiful. And behalf of District Two, thank you, Jesus, for putting your expertise and your talent to this mural. Thank you to the Cesar Chavez Neighborhood Association for coming up with this. And it's something that we have been needing for quite some time. Thank y'all for taking the lead, Louis and Mr. Arvizo that talked earlier. Thank you so much for your comments and as a council member from District Two, I thank you.
Any other comments, Josh?
I'm also really excited about this and it sounds like we've got the right artist to do it and the mural kind of encapsulating or encompassing centuries of Hispanic contribution to our community and the larger community. In the, in the panel on the far left on the triptych, is that Selena Quintanilla singing in the middle there or who is that?
It is Selena Quintanilla.
I think you can't miss those.
I'm sorry.
It's Selena.
It is.
He said it was.
I'm sorry to check this out, guys. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. At the beginning, we start talking about, you know, abroad, composition, about the contribution of Hispanic, Mexicanos, Americanos around Texas, even through Mexico all the way to Texas for El Camino Real. So if you can see, we got Selena in the middle and on top of Selena is Lydia Mendoza, like with a lot of respect, like the old Selena, back, I guess, back in the 40s, 50s, 60s. And yeah, definitely, and you know, Selena shows her love and her passion to not just the Hispanic, but I would say to the whole world. And she's a grand piece for, for, for America, for the United States. And the bottom, the guy who's open arms is Juan Gabriel. He's, he's from Mexico. And, and the lead with the hat is Vicente Fernandez under Maria Feliz. And Mario, the guy with the Grammy Award, he was from Waco. He just passed away, I guess, at some, a year ago, something like that. And then Mr., the one in the very bottom and top of the church is Trujillo. He belonged to Waco, yes.
Moses Villareal.
Moses Villareal, the guy with the accordion, yes. And then La Calle Dos, and thank you, Señor Roberto, he's the one who told me about painting La Calle Dos where most of the Mexicanos live, and I just put some of the dancers in Fiesta next to it.
Well, and I love, my wife's from Corpus and, and she was, you know, there when, when Selena really ascended and just remembers how profound that was for her, her and her classmates, you know, and how exciting it was. But I also love the, the local architecture that you've incorporated there too. So this, this has definitely got my full approval on these requests and I'm excited about this and I appreciate you spending the time on this and Fiona and your team working to make this happen and, and Bradley and the city management team just really showing our, our city how important these contributions have been and how it's important to memorialize them in this mural. So thank you to all involved. This is a great project.
Yeah, I'll just echo other council members here. I think it's kind of cool also is during Hispanic Heritage Month, we're talking about this and we're demonstrating our, the honor and respect and really the celebration of the Hispanic heritage here in the city. And I'm just happy that while I'm on council, that we get the opportunity to do this because it seems like it's long overdue, right? So we're getting the opportunity in several areas and I think we're being very intentional about it too, not, not just here, which is just such a beautiful mural, but also we saw last, in our last meeting, the Floyd Casey kind of renaming that and getting, getting that named downtown. We're having opportunities to talk about Sandtown and La Pila and Mutualista and the Caedos and St. Francis on the Brazos, so many things that we should have always been celebrating. Maybe we are, but I think we're being more intentional, more public about how we, how we feel about this and how we're celebrating it. So I'm really happy, again, that I'm on council and we're doing these, these kind of things. And thanks for your influence on that too, Alicia.
Do you want to make a comment?
Also, I just want to mention, Jesus, I'm happy to hear that Waco is taking precedence over Florence, Italy, and your artists, and your artists, no, I think that's pretty important. I've been to Florence, there's a lot of art going on over there. There's a lot going on here too, I appreciate it. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Fiona, and thank you, Mr. Rivera, and also thanks for the comments earlier.
Jesus, thank you for taking time out of your busy, I've been following you quite a bit.
Always, I'll always refer this to my city. Everywhere I go, I say it.
All right, all right.
Tell them about us in Florence.
Thank you, Jesus.
Our next.
I love to add to it.
Great. Our next item is Work Session 2024-775, City Manager Ford.
Sure. I don't know how Brendan Wiley or Cameron Park, Zoo Director's gonna beat that. I told him he should have brought a penguin because.
What is our penguin?
That was a great presentation. But no, Brendan's gonna be here giving an update on all things zoo. It's gonna, the update's gonna span animal care updates to statistics and numbers for the year, as well as give you a kind of a peek into where we're headed at the zoo. And so I'm excited for Brendan to share, share what's going on.
Thank you, City Manager Ford, Mayor members of the council. It's great to be here with you and I may have a trick up my sleeve. We'll, we'll see. So over the next 15 minutes, we're gonna provide some general updates, share some of our current initiatives, and then spend just a couple of minutes getting into kind of what are some of those future strategies that are on our radar and identify kind of the first step for building a future that we're framing as a governance study. So general updates, kind of wanted to start maybe in a unique place and talk about some of the oldest animals that live at our zoo. You know, it's, it's not lost on me that when a zoo loses an animal, that sticks in people's memories. The reality is we do have some really old animals at our zoo. Everyone on this list is right at the edge or past what would be considered their normal lifespan, but it's really a reflection of the great care that they get. And it's also important to remember that a good, healthy collection has animals of all ages within it. So going from the very oldest to some of the newest, I think everyone's aware that we brought in 22 black-footed penguins, one black-footed cat, but on this list are some of the other things that are gonna make us splash at our zoo. The picture is one of six brand-new Asian-horned pit vipers that live in the back of our herpetarium. So it takes a minute to see it in the picture. They are born venomous, so it'll be a little bit before they're on display. Also on the list, you'll see one penguin egg. Now, as it turned out, that egg was not viable, but the great news is our new residents love their new home in.
All right now.
I'm picking it up.
Pause.
Yeah, things are going great at the penguin habitat. Moving on.
Mayor, I think we understand.
It's just a bird's in the beak. Penguin is a bird, right?
Yeah.
Birds in the beak. Got it.
So we also have a lot of very notable medical cases. And this, this list was actually picked by our staff, asked the question, you know, if, if we could share some of these great stories, which ones would you share? The two at the bottom, Jabba the Rhino and Cushing the Tiger, they're no longer with us, but the care that they received was so leading-edge innovative, you know, not just the memories of those animals stick with us, but so does the effort that was put into them. My particular favorite is the Kirk's Dick Dick Naomi listed. Pull the screen. So Naomi, when she was just four to six months old, ran into a fence and literally broke her neck. And when I met her, she was paralyzed. And we've, may have a little video. The audio. So let me use the benefit of some very leading-edge stem cell therapy where we send her serum to, to a lab in, in the Northeast. They convert her serum into stem cells, send the stem cells back to us, and she is literally walking again. When I first started sharing her story, I didn't know what the outcome was going to be. And I don't know that we still do today, but we know that she's going to have a quality of life that, that not many people dreamed would be possible. And that's just an example of the great care that animals get at our zoo. So from the warm and feel-good into the numbers that feel good, I wanted to talk just a little bit about kind of what makes up our attendance. And, you know, you think of zoos being places for kids. We actually have more adults that come than kids. Only 42% of our visitation comes from within McLennan County. And if you think about the fact that we'll see about 335,000 people this year, a lot of people from McLennan County and a whole lot more that come to McLennan County and leave their economic benefit here. From a market saturation rate, we're currently about 115%, which is great, but clearly we have our eyes on even greater. And potentially, one of the most important bullets on this slide is that last one. Why do we care how many people come in a car? And that's gonna become clear here in just a couple more slides. Looking at attendance over the last 10 years, what I would ask you to do is kind of make a mental note of where the 350,000 people line is on this slide. You know, obviously this has COVID in it and so it's really hard to, to not take a lot of time talking about kind of the, the effects of that, so I'm not gonna spend much time on it.
Can you go back to that one, Director?
Sure.
Holmes, is that, are these fiscal year? I was trying to figure this out when I was looking at this weekend, the.
These, so the numbers.
24 just through eight months or is that the whole year or what?
The numbers on this slide are actually the calendar year, which is how we report our numbers, our attendance numbers to kind of the.
So 2024 is still three months shy, right?
Yes, it is. Now, what I will tell you is that once you understand your trend, attendance is really predictable. So we won't be less than what the number is on this slide.
So that's projected through 2024? Okay, full year projection. Okay, I didn't, okay, that's, that was my question.
So what has penguins done?
And for us, since we've opened, in the last three months, it has literally doubled our attendance year over year. Now, it's also not lost on us that 2023 had a very hot summer, but we can certainly see the. the positive impact that Penguin Shores is having. So, if you remember, actually, I'll just go back to it real quick, that 350,000 line, we crossed that in 2019. So, we know that's possible, but what we're talking about at the zoo today is actually, how do we get to an attendance level of 450,000? So, short answer is, if we, year over year, have a 4% increase, we can do that within seven years. That 4% annual increase is slightly better than what is typically seen around the country, but we know that financially, things just look a lot better if we can be seeing 450,000 people a year. And we also know that the population density is there within a 90-mile radius. So, some of our current initiatives, obviously, we know that Penguin Shores opened, it has been great. Later this month, we've got the ribbon cutting for the new education center, the new veterinary hospital. Picture on the left is the classrooms almost completely complete. Picture on the right is a brand-new operating room. At the same time, we're implementing a ton of small changes, and our staff is extremely dedicated, hardworking, doing everything from fixing up the landscape to irrigation to making little differences in the guest experience from day to day, conscious about how we make decisions and how we're managing our budget and generating feedback. And from the feedback that we're generating, we can tell that our guests are noticing these differences that we're making. From a larger impact difference, we are really trying to wrap our minds and our practices around how we use water. When I moved to Texas, we were talking about drought. At the zoo, we had a lake that was leaking water, and that leak had about a capacity of a million gallons per day through that leak. So, we have frustrated a number of our guests by closing down the given exhibit right at the front of the zoo, but we're fixing that problem and we're doing it together as a team. Projects being led by the Public Works Department, we work with water utility to understand exactly how we're using water, how we're using our two different types of water. We are operating with the goal to use roughly 100 million gallons less water annually, which will hopefully make us a role model organization in this community for treating water respectfully, and it saves a lot of money. So, other current initiatives is, quite honestly, just being a better neighbor. We just talked about how much water flows through our site. You know, we need to understand the impact of, of not just how that affects our site, but how we affect the sewer system. We need to get our programming into more of the community and get more of the community to the zoo. We are starting to establish local conservation priorities. Just a month ago, we did our first Brazos River cleanup, which was great. In field trips, in spring break, we've got to do a better job about getting those scheduled, managing our parking, and getting people to use public transportation system. So earlier, when I said, we've got to pay attention to how many people are coming, are one of the issues with field trip season is, you get big buses bringing a lot of kids, and then a whole ton of cars bringing one parent to be with each kid. And when we get inundated with cars in our lots, people then park everywhere. So this next slide is really interesting.
And going.
Back to again, well, can we get to that population area to generate 450,000 annual visitors? This is just a look last year at the different school districts that came to the zoo in March, April, and May. And they're coming from a substantial distance. This is an incredible platform to be having that conversation from. Kind of looking at that attendance by month, what you see is March, April, May, about 40% of our annual attendance. So we need to make sure that we are kind of holding sacred that timeframe and really making that a rewarding experience because the easiest customers we have are repeat visitors, whether that's more than once a year or year after year. At the same time, putting a lot of effort into each individual animal. Every animal has a welfare plan, every animal is assessed.
Every animal.
Matters at the Cameron Park Zoo. And we continue to look at our site. We know that we've got a wide range of infrastructure. This facility in this picture, we call the ranch house, that's for years where our education animals have been housed, they're getting ready to move to a new amazing facility. This is prime zoo real estate where this ranch house is located. So we're really starting to explore, what are our next steps? What are those steps going to cost? Once we know what they cost, then we can start to look at a plan. So, kind of using that overview of the animals at our zoo get great care, and we've got enormous opportunity to grow our usership. What does the future look like? The Penguin Exhibit, the Education Center, the new Veterinary Hospital really complete the original master plan for the zoo. So.
Is it not?
To distant future, we need to develop that next master plan. We're currently looking at what is our strategy as it relates to those core focus areas and, and what's going to be that plan? And of course, what's the parallel business plan? So it's, it's really the last bullet on this slide that I would suggest needs to be completed first to do the best job in developing the next three, and that's the governance study. A governance study really helps you understand. And so, the why behind it is, the zoo's unique. There's two primary organizations that work there, the City of Waco and the Cameron Park Zoological and Botanical Society. We've never taken a look at really what does it cost to operate the zoo? Each organization knows their budget, but what does it actually cost to operate the zoo? A governance study will benchmark us to comparable zoos in Texas and around the country, so that you don't just have the opinion of one person saying, we need to get our attendance to this level. We've got a studied analysis of what we should be able to accomplish. And in turn, that helps both a governing body and city leadership really make informed decisions about the future. So on tonight's agenda, there is a resolution to engage canopy strategic partners to study the governance of the Cameron Park Zoo. And, not that I'm trying to steal words from the city manager, but there, he said it well, so I'm going to steal it.
While the governance study.
Is the first step of a privatization process. Privatization is not on the table today. What is on the table today is studying our operating model to learn how to best maximize and make it efficient. And the Cameron Park Zoological and Botanical Society is in it with us. They are funding half of the study. So once the study is complete, we will get a set of deliverables, and.
The deliverables will include?
Two different financial models. One is if we continue down the road with goals and objectives with the exact same model of governance that exists today. And then there will be a comparable forecast that shows what it may look like in some sort of modified or revised partnership between the two organizations. We've also asked the consultant to include timing for novel revenue generating opportunities and for infrastructure projects that would best generate growth. And we should get this data within the next five to seven months.
So.
So, so when you say governance study, that would be both kind of the Cameron Park Zoo Board, the Board of the Zoological Society, and also kind of management and revenue? Like, what all does governance contemplate in this, in this study? Does that make, does my question make sense to you?
Absolutely. It, it's a great question, because it is tough to wrap your mind around, what are we doing exactly? A governance study is commonly referred to as a privatization study.
Okay.
I think governance isn't as scary as privatization, because it's more confusing. So.
So it's kind of a what if, we, we looked at an external contract relationship to run the zoo?
By definition, yes, that is what the evaluation of the governance model would do. The issue, so to speak, is, you can't contemplate that question without truly understanding your operating model.
Okay.
And it's that piece that we're interested in right now. And the way we actually structured the RFP was, this is phase one. Phase one is a study, and then it ends. Based on the study, if we think, and the we is the collective we, if the governing body, if the city manager thinks there may be a more effective and/or efficient way, then later on, we could do a phase two.
Okay, so there's something of kind of a, like, projecting out, it would look like this if we retain this, or it would look like this if we alter it in this way, and there's kind of a feasibility aspect to that?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then that'll be brought back to us for review?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and it will be great information for you to make budget decisions with, to give directives with.
Hey Brendan, I'm going to, before we go there, because if this is, if this study is, has it already begun, or is this the approval today? This is approval today, right? So, we're looking at May?
Yes.
Okay, and that is, at that point, because you were talking about budgeting, that wouldn't be for any decisions to be made for FY '26, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a rush thing.
No, we're, we're definitely going to walk through this very diligently.
Okay.
Because, I mean, for, for a lot of reasons. One, we've got a team, as you saw earlier in some of the animal care portion, we've got a team of about 60 people that are just kicking butt over there.
Yeah.
Doing great work, and we'll have to walk through any further steps in this process really diligently across a couple of years.
We began the convention center study in 2016, we understand.
So in summary, it's an amazing organization to be a part of. It's a vibrant organization with enormous, enormous opportunity ahead of us. And we'd just like to close this presentation with asking you to consider approving Resolution 2024-784. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Director Wiley.
Any questions from council?
I do have some, thank you, thank you so much Brendan. I'm, I'm super excited about everything that we've seen today. The Cameron Park Zoo is an amazing asset that we have, and, you know, it just keeps getting better and better and better. So, in, in, I appreciated the point on being good neighbors, because I think, you know, as a neighbor of the zoo, I know the difficulties that, that happen in high season. But I'm, I'm, I'm curious, just as a resident, so when, where is the parking, where, where do, are the buses staged? Like, okay, so I get drop off, right? But where are they staged until the students finish? I know that's random, but I'm just curious.
So that might have sounded like a random question, but it's a great, direct question. And the answer is, today, we don't have a good staging plan.
Okay, okay.
So, within the next four to six weeks, we're trying to put together a meeting that includes an incredible number of stakeholders, including several different city departments, the Historic Waco Foundation, Region 12, Baylor Downtown, because we've got to find the right place even to park the buses, to maximize the number of cars in our lots, but also get people to park someplace else and take the bus to the zoo. Because it, until you've seen it, you just can't quite understand it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get it. I mean, I, it's one of those things you don't think about till you think about it, and when you're in it, and it's crazy, and you're like, okay, we have to, we must solve for X. But I like the fact that that is, is what is coming, because this is a great time to do that work before we can prepare for our spring break season and, and all the things that will come within another summer with the educate, with the camps and the educational opportunities that will be in the new education center.
Right.
So we've got to solve for that. Maybe consider also reaching out to the Cameron Park Neighborhood Association.
Yes.
So that they can be a part of the conversation as neighbors, because, I mean, if you're, if you're, if, if that is a, a, one of the, the points that we want to make sure that we solve for, then make sure they're included. Secondly, you know, the, the Penguin Exhibit, the Blackfoot Cat Exhibit is amazing. What else? And I was looking at the, the number of aging animals that we have, and the number of new ones, but we've got quite a few, let's see, in the Baptist Church, they belong in Mission One, the older ministry. And so what is on the wish list for the zoo? Again, simply my curiosity, but I, you know, I wanted, I don't know how animals are, I don't know how that, what is the expectancy in term of a, you know, when do we ship out for some new, is it, you know, it's not like rotating cars.
Okay, so.
The fast-forward version.
The fast-forward version. So, in the very near future.
Yeah.
By the end of this month, we will grow our Blackfoot Cat population, we will receive two new Tigers.
Sweet.
After the first of the year, I'm hoping that we will see a new Rhino or two. On kind of the wouldn't it be fun if list, we keep hearing kangaroos mentioned.
Hmm.
And one of the really interesting points of our future, not that I'm trying, you know, on that list of things you wish you would have discussed with your boss first before you mentioned it here. before you mentioned it here.
Don't, don't let me put you on the, on the plank, because
But this is a very pro Kangaroo Council, we have that.
You know, it's, at some point
Him saying Kangaroo Council and put that out in the public.
At some point, we're gonna have to have a really involved conversation about the future of what today is our elephant space.
Yeah.
And so, we've, we've just got all these great opportunities that are gonna define our future.
So, that means that we will have a lot, a long tenure of things to do and build and make this zoo even better than it is today?
Absolutely.
So, it's cool, I like it.
Yeah, we like it, we like it.
With the, the animals that are aging, do we have, i- is it like, like an old appliance that's like, once it's passed its useful life, it's not if but when? Or do we have a, a projection of, of, for instance, the, the giraffe I saw was thirty-four years old, I did some, some quick life expectancy math for giraffes, that's like a hundred and five in human years, give or take. Do we know if, if they're gonna be able to push one-twenty, one, one-thirty?
You know, for the most part, we don't. And it's, it's so unique how different, differently this is viewed. You know, we've got an eighteen-year-old female Sumatran tiger that, to the population geneticists, she's clogging up the, the plan. But she's special to us, you know, so she can, she can have our exhibit as long as she wants. But I, I wish we did. It's just
I was just curious, because I don't, you know, I don't really dabble in these things, so it's
Right.
It's good to have a full perspective on that.
So, we, we keep it on our mind so that we're prepared when it happens. But, you know, our plan right now with our elephant is to continue to transition into geriatric management. Because we know she's old, but we don't know that she knows that. She certainly doesn't act like it, so.
Yeah, I mean, forty-eight's not old, to be clear.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
To be clear.
Quite young, yeah, baby.
It's the forty-eight-year-old, anyway.
Councilmember, uh
A quick question, yeah. And thank you for your report, and congratulations on all the success you're having. The attendance numbers are trending in a great way, and you have these aspirational goals on age composition and origin of visitation. Are those, are those trending the right way too?
So, actually, in the, the goal with kind of trying to level out adults first kids, that's a, you're gonna need to bring another, bring a neighbor kid with you to, if we're gonna meet that goal. In terms of, are we going to affect the, the saturation rate by growing attendance from outside of McLennan County? Yes, we do think we are trending that way. The society, and Christie's here and could tell you the exact number, I'm gonna be approximate, spends between eighty and a hundred thousand dollars a year on out-of-market advertising. And so, it, it's not accidental. We know that we're drawing from College Station routinely, Temple Colleen, Georgetown. We're starting to get more into Austin. What I think really surprised us is how much we're drawing from Dallas. So, you know, the best thing we can do is get people to have a great experience and share that on their social media, and we will grow that.
And I will call my wife and tell her that only one of us is allowed to go when we take our daughter to the zoo, from here on out, so we can get those metrics.
Or bring a friend.
Or bring more kids.
That's true, could bring more children.
Maybe have another baby.
Last month, and I took my, my, my herd of grandkids, and we had a great time. We had a, we had to park almost all the way to the north forth entrance, and we had to walk all the way, and I thought, wow, wouldn't it be nice if we had little golf carts that would shuttle us to the entrance? But there were so many kids out there, and it was on a Friday, and it was a school day. My kids are home schooled, so I was surprised to see all those kids out there on a Friday during a school day. But my kids really enjoyed being out there. Of course, we went to see the penguins, that was the, the main objective of going out to the zoo. My kids wanted to see the penguins, and we stayed there in front of the penguin. They had to see the penguins walk, they had to see them swim, they had to see them congregate, and it was, it was so, I mean, I had a good time myself, I think they're so cute. But we did have a great time out at your zoo, and everything looked so nice, so nice. And we have been to the San Antonio Zoo and other zoos in the bigger cities. Waco is right up there with them, in, in terms that you have our exhibits and the way that the animals are exhibited, and how clean the zoo is, and with all those animals, it doesn't smell bad. The only time we got a bad odor was crossing the, the waterway, you know, that bridge, and the water down there is kinda yucky, but I don't think there's anything you can do about that. But anyway, we had a good time, we had a real good time. And we left a lot of money at the gift shop.
Thank you.
Money well spent, I'm sure those grandkids enjoyed that.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you Director Wiley for the presentation. I'm impressed with that, the field trip, that map, I keep looking at it, you've got people from all over the place. I know
I was trying to figure out, I was like, how we need, we need to push further east and west.
Somehow, but, uh, then I would think that our new vet ed center is just gonna compound that activity, so really, kind of what to look forward to. Uh, basically, this, the end of this is about the governance study and supportive of that. I think we get to figure out what operating cost analysis is there, and some comp studies and best practices, and so, I appreciate your leadership with the zoo. I know, how long have you been there now?
Been
Almost a year. A year, that's what I was thinking. Just a great job, you're doing, we're doing a lot of exciting things out there, and a lot to look forward to, so I appreciate it, Director Wiley.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and we now move to work session 2024-776. City Manager Ford.
All right, last up, we've got a discussion of fiscal year 2024 third quarter financial, investment report as well. We've got Lou Koselik, our Chief Financial Officer and Assistant City Manager, coming to make that presentation. He'll focus in on the major funds primarily on this report, and, and just as a reminder, you know, Blue's
Hello?
New to the city. You can ask him anything you want, I think he'll have an answer. But he is refreshing how we're reporting on financials, and so, this is a, what I'd call an interim step into our financial reporting strategy. I know we've had, over the course of a couple of years, tutorials from our financial wizard or surgeon, Mayor Holmes, so we are building
I didn't see any Gantt charts in this, not, not yet.
We're building up into the Gantt chart land, and I, I know he's, but Blue is working on building the financial reporting model that, that he'd like to see for Waco, and so, we're taking an interim step here and look forward to seeing his work over the next six months on that as well. But Blue, why don't you walk us through what, what I, what I feel like is a, a strong report, and let the council know what you're seeing through the third quarter and what you see for end of year guidance as well.
All right, yes, sir, thank you. City Manager Ford, that was a great intro to this, and like the city manager said, Mayor Council, good to be with you. We are gonna look at really our major funds year-to-date, revenues and expenses through the, the fiscal year Q3, so that's through June thirtieth. Again, those major funds and investment performance review, so overall, just a, just a quick glance, one slide, how are we doing? You're gonna see these major operating funds, all in the green, some a little bit over-budget or under-budget, whatever is favorable, but overall, every fund right now on the year-end forecast is, is looking very healthy, very strong. Going specifically into a general fund, we're gonna start here on the, the budget. Started the year, fiscal year twenty-four, with a balanced budget of two-hundred-and-three million, seven-hundred thousand. Through, I, I did bring out this one in, into a revised budget showing that as well, because we did have some mid-year adjustments that were pretty significant, programmatic changes, so I did want to, to flip over to that revised budget on this fund and, and show you the, the total revenue still stayed around two-hundred-and-three-point-eight million. Expenses did go up to two-hundred-and-fourteen, almost two-hundred-and-fifteen million, so we, we were working with a little bit of a deficit of about eleven-point-one million dollars through our revised fiscal year twenty-four budget. Actuals to date, going into this, a hundred-and-ninety-one, almost a hundred-and-ninety-two million on the revenue side, as opposed to a hundred-and-sixteen, a hundred-and-sixty-two-point-one, so favorable by almost about thirty million dollars through Q3. Now, that, that is a little bit skewed, because always you have a lot of your revenues that come in, especially through property taxes at the beginning of the fiscal year, and then it kind of lags out throughout, through the rest of the year, but you still have a lot of spending that goes on. So, what we've done is, they, the year-end forecast, looking at it, really, the, the revenues looking like they're gonna come around about two-hundred-point-five million dollars. That's, that's really on some strong investment returns throughout the year, sales tax collection is, is still good, not as high as it's been in, in previous years, but offset by a little bit of a, a lag in the property tax collections, and those really in the current fiscal, fiscal year twenty-four, so tax year twenty-four collections, that's where we're seeing a little bit of lag in, in those collections. The transfers in, seven-point-three million dollars, that's gonna show unfavorable, that was really just a budgeted use of some of the excess reserves, some of that reserve capacity that we have. That, that's kind of in there, but, you know, throughout the year, if we need it, it, it comes in, if it doesn't, it falls back to fund balance. So, on the, the salaries and wages throughout your expenses, vacancies, and, and really just our general fund, operational efficiencies are, are producing some, some of the, the surplus that we're seeing in this. Transfers really lowered than, than the original budget, and then, and then into the revised budget, a lot in how we, we changed from the street capacity mid-year to funding through street CIP, so a little bit of change in that, it's gonna produce a little bit of favorability on the transfers out. But overall, looking like we're gonna end up favorable by about one and a half million dollars this, this fiscal year end. Going into our, one of the, the most critical revenue sources for us, which is our sales taxes, is also one of the most volatile, so we do keep, keep an eye on this. This, this just goes through on the top chart, the month that the, those sales taxes are generated, then the, when the comptroller actually sends that back to us. Looking at the prior fiscal year, but then also the current fiscal year, so kind of in the middle right of the, the top of this slide, you're gonna see the current month budget, and then the current month collection. So far, we've collected through July twenty-twenty-four, I know this is Q3, but I'm gonna go ahead and pull in the, the actuals through what we actually have. So, last month coming in strong. You can see the, the dollars over and under budget have really stayed pretty consistent with what our budget is, with the exception of about three months being December, January, and this last month, July. Those look like they're gonna, a little bit more substantial increases and decreases, but if you look into the details of those, between December of twenty-three, the comptroller did a sales tax audit, we don't get any detail on these sales tax audits, so I don't, I can't tell you who it was, but five-hundred thousand was taken out to repay that sales taxpayer, and then in January, another about five-hundred-and-fifty thousand came in from a sales tax audit. So, those, those look like they were, they're substantially under or over budget, it's really not. Same thing happened in July twenty-twenty-four, we had about, of that, five-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand overage, about two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand of that was a sales tax audit that came back to us, so. Still, every month is, is hanging out pretty close to, to what, what our budget actually is. All right, looking at the chart down below, this is, kind of gives you a, a sense of where we've been collecting every month, those blue bars, both the, the dark match with the, the light blue on top, that's our monthly collections, and that purple line, there is the rolling twelve percent change, so just kind of shows you what we're doing on an annual, on an annual roll twelve basis. So, you can see that, that, that purple line is starting to move upwards, upward trend, back in the, back in the positive. That, that is good news for the city, that means that, that collections are starting to roll back in, even as we're starting to see some of that inflation, inflationary gains starting to, to decrease. That, that blue bar, I'm gonna show you that, it's not really noticeable, but that trend is starting to, to slowly increase. So, those raw dollars, that inflation-adjusted dollar from October twenty-nineteenth, that same dollar in, in July, and what we project in August and September of twenty-twenty-four is actually starting to increase, so raw dollars are, are starting to be spent more and more. That's great, but it's not a, a huge significant, significant amount, so, again, sales tax is something that we're gonna be watching. Our Mayor Council moving into our, our major utilities, so the water fund, budget against the, the fiscal year to date, still very, very tight. What we project in that, that year-end forecast, around sixty-six million dollars is slightly below what we had budgeted for revenues, this is really our lower usage throughout the wet, the wet months, bringing in a little bit of less revenues. That is kind of partially offset by our investment earnings, so those, those investment earnings are, are keeping us afloat. So, on total revenues, slightly below budget, but still doing okay. That's also because our projected year-end is about two-point-one million dollars unfavorable, that's really due to some necessary maintenance improvements in that system, you can't always time those, and you can't always budget for them, but they happen, and you gotta fix them. So, a, a little bit of overage there, but still, on the whole, really, really, truly flat, slight surplus of about fifty thousand is what we project at the end of the year, so very, very tight on that budget. Going into wastewater, this is wastewater, and this also does include WMRs, so this is a, a combined wastewater fund. On the, the budget side, started the budget with sixty-six-point-seven on the revenues, actual year-to-date about sixty-five-point-nine million dollars. We, we really anticipate the year to end about seventy-point-six million, so slightly up, three-point-eight million dollars on the revenues. That is from the, the rate increase that we had, so there were, the operating revenues have started coming in a little bit higher than what we were anticipating, what we were budgeting. And on top of that, again, you have your, your strong investment earnings. The projected year-end, about one-point-five million dollars unfavorable, really, really comes down to just, again, necessary maintenance on that, that system. But we do have that in, covered in revenues, so you're gonna have about two-point-six million dollars of surplus in the wastewater fund. Moving to solid waste, again, same story here, the charges for service slightly up, we've had gotten, we increased our rates in fiscal year twenty-four, really to, to start planning for the two major system improvements that we have with the transfer station and the, the new landfills, that revenue is starting to increase, good strong interest earnings on this, leading to a, what we anticipated, thirty-five million dollars for the year end. Favorable balance on the, the, the revenues by about two-point-seven million dollars. On the expense side, really not, not much to say here, other than the transfers out, that's only unfavorable, there was a, a debt payment that was made out of this fund in fiscal year twenty-four that was unbudgeted, so again, we didn't worry about that too much, because we have the revenues to cover that, that expense. So, the wastewater, or I'm sorry, the solid waste system coming out, or coming out, excuse me, favorable with a surplus of about one-point-nine million dollars. And then on the drainage fund, very, very good results here, although our, our charges for services, the actual operations of that, the, the fees that, that people are paying in, slightly below, we did have some interest savings, or interest earnings to offset that, so still about three-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand below what we anticipated for revenues, finishing the year at eight-point-three million dollars, against a forecasted expense of almost seven million dollars, so still good in, in that sense. All of our operations on the expense side are keeping up with, with budgets, so nothing really to, to discuss on the expense side, surplus coming in at about one-point-three, one-point-four million dollars. On investments, just a, just a quick overview of these, beginning On investments, just a quick overview of these. Beginning, or, excuse me, at the end of Q2 fiscal year, Q2, we had about $758 million in our portfolio. That has jumped up to $984 million. That increase, Mayor Council, is just a debt issuance that we had. Those bond proceeds come in, we immediately put those into our investment accounts. So, that's going to be the large jump that you see in our par value, book value, market value. Really, the income summary is what I want to highlight here. The investment portfolio, while meeting everything PFI-related, is performing extremely well. Net income in the quarter of about $8.1 million, and we've had about $25 million of earnings over the three quarters. So, still strong gains in that. We expect more, probably this next quarter is going to be another eight to nine million dollar gain. One thing we do need to watch for is the places that we can put this money is going to start lowering yields as the Fed moves and as we see this market moving. It's going to start moving a little bit lower. So, the available securities that we can purchase are going to have a little bit less yield opportunity for the city. So, what we've been seeing over the last few years, these significant gains in investment earnings might start to decrease, might start to slow down a little bit. Something to be aware of. We have not relied solely on our investment earnings. That's kind of been a little bit of a bonus that we've built into our budget. So, even if our yields start decreasing, our interest earnings start decreasing a little bit, it's not going to be a significant impact on our budget. We'll be able to absorb that. So, overall, just a quick recap, general fund, really, all of your major utility funds are operating extremely well. We're going to be, likely going to be green across the board. You know, as of today, we are starting fiscal year '25, so we kind of have an idea where fiscal year '24 is ending, and that's what you've seen today. Investment earnings, again, remain elevated, but changes with the Fed rates are going to start bringing those yields down. Mayor Council, I'm going to pause here, and I will take any questions that you have.
Any questions for Blue?
One, a quick one. Thank you. I don't know how long I get to say that I'm the new person and don't understand, but what, when, yeah, thank you. When, on the general fund, the revenue side, the, going back to the property taxes, were significantly lower than what was projected. What causes that?
Usually, it's on the county side. When there's protests that come in, those payments are not made for that at that time. So, they may come in later on, after there's a settlement made. That can also be prior years that, you know, some arbitration is complete, and we actually owe back. They'll just take out of the collections that were coming to us. So, those two combined.
Got you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? I didn't, I do, at the end of the year, we'll see maybe more detail on year-over-year and KPIs and that. But this is a nice third quarter report. I like the sales tax detail, which we haven't seen that before. And I'm good with focusing on those big five, as you have done here. Was WMRs included with wastewater?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, I also like the fact that we're combining that investment report. Since, coming from private sector, it's always like, combine the balance sheet and income statement, but we rarely look at our balance sheet here. It's always the P and L. But anyway, good, good report. I like how this is coming along. Appreciate it. Anything else? City Manager Ford? Is that it?
That's all for me.
That's all. We now have item number 777. Are there any requests for future addenda items? Nothing there. We will now recess to the Work Session and reconvene Regular Session for Executive Session, as read into the record by the City Secretary at 4:36.
It's hereby given that the City Council will go into Executive Session in accordance with the following provisions. Rural Property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. Personnel, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.074. Nomination and appointments of individuals to the McLennan County Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Personnel, Texas Opens Meeting Act, Section 551.074. Discussion of the City Attorney Appointment Process and Review and Discuss Candidates for City Attorney and Economic Development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.87. We are now in Executive Session.